Good morning. Today is Thursday, August 2020. We are here for a work session as always. We will start with the pledge. Jody, can you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jody. I have one announcement, a reminder to all our residents, that the town highway department is continuing its effort to remove debris left after the recent tropical storm. And our state of emergency will remain in effect until this initiative is totally complete. We found out that this effort that we initiated last Monday is a lot bigger than we anticipated. And they're just finishing clearing the debris in Wading River. And I believe they're going to Calhoun next. Today, our first discussion will be on micro apartments. Joining with us via Zoom to discuss this concept is Mitch Pally, Chief Executive Officer of the Long Island Builders Institute, and legislator Kara Han. Mitch, is he on? Because I know he said 10:15. Okay, so we could start without him in either case. I know that Mitch is a busy man and he's in between meetings and he's supposed to be calling in at 10:15 so he can join us after that. We appreciate his time and the legislator's time to join us today. And all of this done was at the last minute. This morning, we made calls and we got the legislator's PowerPoint last night. And we're going to be utilizing. I got permission from Mitch to use it and I want to thank you for that. I'd like to make a brief statement on micro apartments, then I'll turn it over to the legislator. I know she's pressed for time and then I'm just going to present, you know, her PowerPoint unless you want to do it, legislator. Okay, you're fine? Okay, no problem. Empty large-scale retail or big box store space has long since plagued many communities across the United States, including Riverhead. The COVID-19 pandemic will most certainly add to the growing eyesore of abandoned storefronts in our area. Suffolk County legislator Kara Han, who's with us today, has spearheaded an initiative on micro apartments while providing much-needed housing without taxing our school district or precious natural resources. Locations under consideration here in Riverhead may be the Kmart building, which closed in 2018, the old Walmart building, which closed in late 2013, and the Toys R Us building, which closed in 2018. These locations could be utilized under mixed-use apartments and commercial space. I have asked, he's still not here, Mitch? I guess we'll have the legislator. I know that you're pressed for time and we opened this up for you this morning. And I thank you again for agreeing to briefly join us. I'll turn it over to you and if you can add your efforts, where have you been, where are you going? And then later on, the board hopefully will have a hefty conversation on where we might want to go. There are concerns, of course, and this is something that has to be worked out with the community, with the board. Nobody's dictating that this is where we're going and this is what has to be. Okay, we've got to get a lot of the kinks out and a lot of the legislation, make sure we're in line. And we also have a master plan that is in the works. And hopefully that if we move forward with this type of effort, that it will be incorporated into the master plan, legislator.
Thank you very much. Thank you for including me this morning. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this idea. And you did such a fantastic job, supervisor, laying the groundwork of the background about vacant retail spaces that exist. I had done, you know, some research and reading on projects that have been happening across the country and actually around the world that have taken, and this is really before COVID. I've been looking at this for more than, probably I would say around two years now. The decrease in the retail spaces and the vacancies that are growing, much to do with online shopping, but intensified due to COVID and the reluctance of individuals to shop in retail. So we're beginning to recognize and see the vacancies and not just big box stores, as you mentioned. The other areas of consideration here are supermarkets. I know in my district, I could count, it probably takes two hands to count the number of vacant supermarkets. Some had been converted pre-COVID to gyms, but whether or not they'll survive during the pandemic and, you know, being closed for so long, it's hard to say. And so these spaces, whether they're in a strip mall, supermarket, a gym, a Kmart, a party city, you know, I could continue to list the types of businesses that have shut their doors and have remained vacant some for 15 years in my district. And that does not help the local mom-and-pop businesses. Having a strip center or community shopping center where the anchor tenant was a larger supermarket and the flow of people would help the mom-and-pop restaurant, or the mom-and-pop florist, or the mom-and-pop, you know, fill-in-the-blank. Our local community shops that would thrive with the different types of businesses. Now, when the anchor tenant in a strip center goes out of business and is vacant for 15 years, you know, you really need to be rethinking what can happen. If the supermarket's not viable there, if a Kmart's not viable there, what can we do to, you know, give a shot in the arm, to inject some vibrancy into the downtown areas, into places where we've already invested lots of dollars in infrastructure? When you think about it, there's already existing parking lots, there's already existing utilities, there's already existing curb cuts on the roadways. There was already an understanding of the traffic that could occur. And if those could be converted to add, micro apartments is the idea that we're looking at. It could be, you could have it a mix types of apartments. But a single supermarket, a small supermarket, could be converted into a number of micro units that are small. We're talking 350 to 400 square feet. And this is happening all over the country. And it's adding customers to downtowns. It's adding customers to shopping centers where there was just vacant, empty space before. And it's really recycling these already-built spaces and reusing them in a way that can help the community with its housing needs and that can help the businesses provide customers. So we've done work with our planning department, has done a lot of work helping us think through this. And our health department, who has reduced the flow needed for a smaller unit for the micro apartment. We're working with the IDA for incentives and other ideas on transfer of development rights. And we're just, and the planning department produced a model code that you have, you know, a draft version of. And we're looking for the towns' input. And obviously, every jurisdiction will have a different take on it. And we'll tweak it to meet the needs of your communities. But we just want you to be thinking about this as a way to help the blight that could occur when there are large vacancies, anchor tenants in shopping centers, and in downtowns. I hope that wasn't too long.
Thank you, legislator. And again, I appreciate you at the last minute this morning when we told you we were going to present, you know, agreeing to be a part of this. And I understand that the county is doing it, the generic district overlay?
Yes, we took your idea. So, thank you. You know, it's so wonderful to work together, the towns and the county work together. And when there's a good idea, so that was, we talked about it yesterday at our CEQ, which is our Council on Environmental Quality. And Andy, I think Andrew on here, is that Andy Freeling from our planning, Economic Development Division? So they are working on how we can help the SECR review process. We haven't, you know, firmed that up yet, but we are taking your idea and working on it. Thank you very much, supervisor.
Well, thank you for following up. And we had a couple of healthy conversations on this in the past. And again, and thank you for providing us with your PowerPoint and allowing us to use it. And I think that we are, we're waiting for Mitch Pally to come on. He's supposed to be on at...
Some technical difficulties on their end. We're working it out.
Okay, so he should be here shortly. I do want to mention that, again, this is, every jurisdiction adopts this. So it's not anything, and, you know, we're possibly looking for mixed use here. There's one thought here, moderately priced, because we have a lot of snowbirds and we think that might be a little more. But this is something that the whole board has to discuss. These are topics, it does not necessarily have to be affordable housing. It can be moderately priced homes and it could be a mixed use where you may have a general store down below where residents can come in. I also understand, and I wasn't very clear, I understand that this is not going to impact traffic. There's been traffic studies because of the nature of the box stores where you might have a thousand people around Christmas or holiday or on the weekend. And they have done the traffic studies and apparently, correct me if, you know, if I go off on a different angle from what you know, is that the traffic, it will be less in general?
Yes, yes. The coming and going is much less. Well, you know, it's hard to say how COVID could change that. People, you know, don't go out as much now. But the coming and going of, you know, a small number of apartments in a super, would be very different from, you know, what, again, if it was a Kmart, you could think hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people a day. Sometimes, depending on the size, you know, it could be more. And, you know, when you don't even have that many, the comings and goings, most of the time goes down.
So this is a discussion that we're having here. It seems that it may be a unique opportunity to build on Riverhead's future to eliminate our blighted, the three blighted box stores that we have. But there's also a great possibility, and I want to include our councilman Frank Bayrod, who's charged with our TDR committee. And it may, it may add, and we may consider, again, we're, you know, all the way in the East End and we have the farms. And we may be able to incorporate TDR use into this effort. And I'll let you speak to the councilman on that behalf.
Yes, thank you, legislator Han. You and I have worked together on farmland preservation for many years. And I'm glad that you included the TDR aspect in this possibility. It's really, it's endless, the possibilities. Right now, in our school district, you may know that we're really over capacity already. So when we consider the ability to preserve farmland, which are maintain and occupy all of our residential zoning, that really has a great impact on whether or not housing tracts will go in. The other thing is, of course, you know, our fruits and our vegetables and our produce being grown locally is something we've grown accustomed to here. So I think it really serves a great purpose, and especially in our community where our hospital is really growing beyond in leaps and bounds. And having that walkability, I think that's a really exciting possibility. Professional people having apartments and being able to commute by walking is really exciting.
In addition, the concept also, and I know you've done some studies on it, that it's going to, the impact on our school system is going to be minimal. Is that correct?
Yeah, so Mitch can talk a little bit more about that. The Stony Brook University School of Business did a study and he has the details. So when Mitch comes on, I think he'll be able to talk about that. But to your point, councilman, I think what's exciting about encouraging micro apartments in currently improved but vacant spaces is that the pressure is off the virgin land or the, you know, wooded parcels or the farms. You know, let's direct the new development to where we already have the investment in the infrastructure, to where we've already done the damage on the land. Let's just reuse it in a way that benefits our communities. So, you know, not every reuse project will be for apartments or micro apartments. But the model code here and the overlay district, that's possible. You can decide where that's appropriate for your community. But I think we need to find ways to incentivize and encourage and make it easier for the development to happen where we've already done the damage and where we're not cutting down trees, where we're not paving over farmlands, our precious farmland and our wonderful soils. And, you know, so I think that there's so much that we can do to take this and try to think together across our municipalities and our communities and use all of our minds to think about ways to incentivize these property owners, whether they're older box stores or whether they're new ones that were built and then the world changed. But we should be reusing them, recycling what's already been invested and bettering our community with what the community wants and needs where they want and need it.
We're also seeing a surge in retail space out here, not retail, I'm sorry, but residential. People that are fleeing the urban areas. So now, more than ever, this is a critical time to start, you know, the discussion. But it's really an interesting concept and thanks for bringing it to us.
From the lower level, can I ask a question? From the lower level on the mezzanine, we're calling it the mezzanine level and the lower level now.
Retail.
Due to COVID, yeah. So when does the county expect that they're going to start the SECR process?
So that's a question for Andy, but we're still trying to figure out how we can make, how we can help. Obviously, every project's going to be different. But how can we help facilitate it so that it's less of a burden on the local jurisdictions? So I apologize that we don't have an answer yet on that, but we are, we're working on that now.
Because the town, we're in the process of updating our master plan. So we're spending a lot of money on SECR, so I don't think that we shouldn't be overlapping if the county is going to be doing a broad study of the county. We could have some savings there as far as the master plan update, number one. And I'm just wondering if the study through the SECR process is going to evaluate how many affordable units each town has versus their, you know, population? Because, I mean, we have several manufactured home parks, we have affordable apartments downtown. Last year, I had brought this up at a news review panel that I was on. The idea of what you're talking about with from pavement to green, creating ownership opportunities in townhouses near the hospital so that people could have ownership equity and they could be able to walk to the hospital and it could be affordable. So, but the ownership opportunity. So I'm just curious as to whether or not the SECR will do a study, the comparison of how much affordable there currently is in a township to the population, number one. And also, any loss of sales tax from the county and the state in converting these retail establishments into living spaces? And, you know, that's, the TDR committee is another thing that we had discussed because obviously the townships that have sewer districts that can accommodate the apartments and the living spaces, the ones with the sewer districts are going to see it more beneficial to them than the ones without sewer districts. Like, so I guess that needs to be evaluated too as to...
Yes, I'm writing down your questions and I will pose them to the planning staff for sure.
Yeah, like which of these big box stores or these blighted properties are located near sewer districts? And then also where the money is to expand our sewer districts? Because the county was helpful in giving us $8 million to update the Riverhead sewer district to bring down our, to bring down our numbers as far as the discharge. And we have a cap. We, you know, we spent $24 million and the residents that are within the school district are looking at a 400% increase because we weren't able to use the sewer stabilization fund to offset that three percent, what should have been a 3% tax increase and is now a 400% tax increase based on the $24 million to upgrade, based on the New York State DEC's request. So I'm just, all of that needs to be taken into consideration as to the affluent and what capacity the sewer districts have and how much money is going to be allocated by the county or the state in order to convert these retail spaces into residential.
Yes, and all of that, you know, is to be determined. This is, you know, a new idea that we're walking around the county and trying to get input and questions. And we will work on all of that. So thank you. I've written it all down. So I appreciate, I appreciate your questions and your input. I also think on a broader level, you know, I think that in a plan, for a planning perspective, we talk about, you know, the county's reclaim our water initiatives. I do think as we move forward, we, and we run out of land to build on and we recognize that there were places that should never have been built on, we will have a reclaim our land project in front of us where we can take back land that has been improved. Hopefully, with dollars that, you know, open space investments, we can take back improved land. We can return it, return them to green spaces. And these are things that should be discussed as you're, you know, pointing development in your downtowns, pointing development towards your sewer districts and the places that work best and the places where communities want development to happen. Part of the offset can be asked that spaces on the outskirts that probably never should have been built, that cause community problems that may be rundown or blighted or completely vacant, can be returned to green space. You know, we don't have to believe that once something's built on, it's lost forever. It is more costly. We do have to find ways to create funds for demolition if that's to happen. But I do think keeping that idea in your mind is, because you at the local level are the ones who direct the development and decide where it happens. And so keep in mind that we can reclaim land that's been built on and bring it back to natural. And we can direct, you know, through and to the councilmen in the upper deck there. Going with the baseball and continuing that. We can, you know, use transfer of development rights and we can find ways to make that feasible. But, but your, councilwoman, your questions are very valid and I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have answers today, but we will, we'll take those back.
I've sat with the TDR committee for many years and it's been a discussion that's been ongoing for years as to how do we get farmland preserved and more density in areas where we do have the sewer district? And one of the biggest hurdles in determining that was the funds for the SECR. So I'm glad that the county is going to be looking at that. And, you know, what would be equitable as far as a transfer of development right of a farmland in order to get additional unuts on a sewered piece of property is a very beneficial discussion to have and exercise to take to preserve as much farmland as we can with the concerns of the school district and everything else.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all your work on preserving our farmland. I know the county is, it's so hard to see, but, oh wait, maybe I could do some review and see you guys better.
The county's been a great partner with us on preserving farmland and we thank you for that.
Yes.
So just a few points. Hi Kara, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
You know, obviously you brought up that every community has to look at what works for them. And, you know, there's a lot of things I like here. There's things that we have to look at because of our town. Just talking to my councilmates here about that. I love the idea, of course, you know, we have a problem in Riverhead with empty box stores along Route 58, which was built up years ago with so many box stores. And we're always trying to advance our TDR program because we have such rich, wonderful farmland around us. Just in Riverhead, I think we need to look because we actually have quite a bit of affordable housing. So it was brought up that we'd look at that. I believe we have about 3,200 units of affordable housing in our town. So I think that's something we have to look at. And I'd be very interested, you guys are saying that the traffic is actually better. Traffic's always a concern for us on Route 58. So that would be something that I'd be interested to hear about. And the other thing for me that's always a concern is that we're working so hard to revitalize our downtown area and we have a lot of apartments coming in there. And as it was brought up, we, you know, we're doing an overlay district in the downtown area, which I'm proud to say was something that came out of the Downtown Revitalization Committee.
Really doing a wonderful, a wonderful job there. I mean, that riverfront and the downtown, the restaurants, it's, you know, it's a destination for sure.
Yeah, we're blessed with an aesthetically beautiful area for our downtown along the Biconic River. So we're working really hard on that. But we do have a lot of apartments in our downtown area that I'm hoping that we can fill as well. So these are all challenges that we have, but I definitely like the thoughts of using our box stores and any way that we can advance the TDR program or save farmland is always good. But discussions to be had.
Yes. Yes. No, I think it's, I think it's critical that everyone recognizes that this is to be tweaked as appropriate to the community. No one here is saying, this is what, you know, county's not trying to say to you, this is what you should do. We're saying to you, please evaluate this as an option for your community and the needs in your community. And, you know, I think we all agree that we have a very varied, that's what's so spectacular about Suffolk County, right? Is all that it has to offer, very varied communities and with varied needs, varying needs. So it's important that each municipality takes this, these suggestions and thinks about them and then comes back to us with how you could use it and what we could do to help you use it and how you'd like to see it, you know, how you would change it if you were to adopt it. And we can all learn from that.
Yes, great points. And what I did hear you saying is it's not a one-size-fits-all. Riverhead is unique and we're proud of that, the fact that we are so unique. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Legislator, thank you so much. You know, I...
Um, you know, I, I know, uh, the last meeting that, um, when you were presenting this concept to supervisors, um, you know, we decided that we wanted to try to move forward and we inquired a little bit. This is just a discussion, we want the public to know.
Yes.
There aren't going to be micro apartments and all, all of a sudden overnight, the state has offered on many fronts. They brought the, the concept, we are embracing it, it's just a discussion. And again, the great thing about this effort is it's a generic effort adaptable to each town, whether you work with downtown or you're working on Route fifty-eight. Um, it, and, and the fact that you are maybe doing, uh, I think there is a draft overlay that towns can adopt and Jody will work on that, um, with it, uh, and the fact that you're doing, uh, possibly a generic SECRE that could be adopted. We are very different than Islip and the fact that it's so versatile and we're able to make it Riverhead-specific, I think it's a, it's a great idea. And, uh, I, I, all the efforts and I know you put a lot of work, I've been told behind the scenes that you did a lot of work on demographics and, and a lot of efforts and going back and it's great to see in Riverhead. Uh, I've been coming out here, I have a family since, uh, forty-two years and, uh, it's great to see the town working with the state cohesively, collaboratively, and partnering because basically that's what we are doing. We are saying, you're Riverhead and you have, uh, you know, you've studied this concept and you are, we're in a discussion, which is healthy and that's how you're going to get your outcomes from. And again, I, I thank you for your professionalism and the effort and working with us and you'll be hearing from us because, uh...
Excellent.
You know, there's a lot of questions, as the council members brought up today, there's a lot of questions and we'll get through this.
And the same, the same way that, um, all of Suffolk County is not, um, the same, all of Riverhead is not the same and that's what's great about, you know, a overlay district where you can decide, you know, where it works best for you. Um, uh, you know, and, and you, you know, you can make those choices at working with the community. And so, um, I, I think there are places it can work really well and really help our mom and pop businesses when they need it most.
Right. And I know that Mitch Palley's pulled over on the side of the road since, uh, ten fifteen, so I'm gonna let him in. If, I'd love for you to stay, but if you need to leave, again, thank you for your efforts and you'll be hearing from us.
So Kara, just...
I'll stay and listen to Mitch, I'll stay and listen to Mitch, but, um, but I might have to drop off at some point.
We gotta put Mitch on, he's on the side of the road.
I just wanted to add one thing, I, I mean, it's always good to, let's say, it's always good to be creative and think outside of the box.
Okay. Thank you.
No pun intended, that's nice.
Came into your front and center at the mic.
Go ahead, it's all yours.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, and we, uh, appreciate the opportunity to communicate with the, uh, members of the Riverhead Town Board. Uh, I apologize, I am driving out to Sag Harbor as, as we speak, so, it's, uh, in direction, uh, but I just want to follow up on, uh, with what Legislator Kara Hahn said. Uh, she and County Planning Commissioner Sarah Lansdale, uh, have put together a great group of people and I've been honored to be part of that committee. Uh, we think this is a great opportunity for redevelopment, um, as, as the legislator said, you know, not every site is the same. Uh, she and I live in a community where the Smith Haven Mall is across the street from where I live and they've lost one, if not two, big box stores and they may look at this issue a little differently than Riverhead will look at it, but in the context of redevelopment, this is a great opportunity, um, from the builder's perspective, um, you know, especially on Route fifty-eight, whereas you know, I've been a member of the TDR committee for many years and have been working to try to get a residential along fifty-eight because you already have the infrastructure, you already have the sewers there, um, and as much as we can make this happen, whether it's micro apartments in some places near the hospital or other regular apartments, um, I think it, it makes a tremendous amount of sen- sense, uh, in this regard. I know the county has been very helpful, we were on a call this morning, uh, about using some county TDRs to help and the county IDA is willing to help finance the program, so, uh, we are strongly in support of trying to see how it fits into each local community. Um, and we'd re, we'd love, I will tell you, we'd love Riverhead to be first, uh, to make it work if that's possible, uh, because of the attributes you already have on Route fifty-eight. So, um, you know, from, as I said, from what I'm a builder's perspective, this is a great opportunity and we look forward to working with the town and the county to make it happen in any way we can.
Right. And, and part of the SECRE also Kara and Andrew is, um, we really need to look at, Riverhead has our own water district, we're very unique in Suffolk County in that we have our own water district and there is a tremendous demand on our water district now and you're, when you're switching from retail to housing, the water consumption and the water needs will become much greater. So, and we are under different guidelines, uh, having our, our township that owns a water district than the Suffolk County Water Authority is. So, that needs to be looked at also as to the water consumption and supply and demand switching from retail to residential.
And there's also a consideration, and I know Mitch Palley had brought this up in a conver, a prior conversation, uh, to, uh, possibly incorporate where if you are going to do a plan to build out one of these stores is to, to request a bus stop where maybe, or shuttle where they can, let's say it's on fifty-eight, you, you're using Kmart and then you have a shuttle to downtown. You know, twice a day.
Oh, boy.
I mean, and that will integrate the different components of our town, you know, uh, our, our shopping district and our downtown and even, you know, and we can request a bus stop, uh, that make, and, or shuttle and, or go to the Atlantis.
You just created a new business.
I just did.
North, North Trolley is coming back.
Okay, the trolley, we'll have a trolley. It's just, uh, how, how far is Kmart from downtown, Jody?
Not far.
A mile?
But a loop to get people from the, a loop to get from the housing to downtown to Epcal to go to work when we create those new five thousand jobs.
And we also have to mention that, Jody, that, you know, uh, IDA credits, it doesn't have to be taxed, it could be on the, on, on, on the builder's, um, uh, it was not, uh, people, unfortunately, sometimes it's misunderstood, tax, tax breaks, um, we can, uh, you can apply the credits towards the materials that the builders use and, and so it, it, it's so much to, I mean, again, this is just an initial discussion and, um, and we have some work to, to do, but again, we're very appreciative. And Mitch, thank you for agreeing, I know it was a last-minute thing yesterday to come on as I was doing the research and trying to put it together and again, the legislator, we let her know this morning, she wanted to join us and, um, again, thank you for your efforts in, um, you know, working with us, uh, so quickly and, uh, this is, yeah.
Go ahead Mitch.
My pleasure and, and as I said, we will continue to work with the county, uh, with County Legislator Hahn and, uh, Sarah Lansdale and try to, you know, put together generic overlay district, uh, language that your planning department can use, uh, a generic environmental impact statement from the county on it. So, uh, I know the county is very supportive of this and, as we are, um, it alleviates a lot of different attributes. It reduces traffic, it keeps you in the sewer district so you don't have septic issues, um, it provides people who are going to spend money in Riverhead, uh, it provides people who are going to work in, you know, if you use the Kmart site at, at the hospital, there's a lot of great opportunities here, uh, for Riverhead to take advantage of and we hope it all works out in the end. So, but thank you again for giving me the opportunity to participate, I greatly appreciate it.
And, and just to make a note Mitch, we all have an aging population, including myself. And, uh, you know, people may, you know, who may be, uh, snowbirds and they go to Florida in the winter and they say, you know, I'm going to give up a house, I can't afford it or it's too much for me, it's too big and I'll live in, you know, six months in Riverhead and I can, it's more economically feasible and then I can, I can go to Florida. So, it's, uh, you know, we, the demographics here, and I understand, uh, Legislator, you also, you, you did, uh, there was some study on demographics, correct, on the population?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, ask that one more time, it was kind of muffled, I apologize.
I think there was some type of study you may have con- conducted on demographics and , uh, population that these apartments...
Oh, so Mitch, um, Mitch, she had asked earlier about, um, the study that was Stony Brook University's Business School did, um, can you talk a little bit about that Mitch? Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Actually...
We did a, we did a study on, we, Stony Brook University did a study which I can more than happy to send to you on the number of schoolchildren created by multifamily developments, um, so we can do that obviously, yes.
Actually, I think the demographics that I had asked for earlier were, in all the townships in Suffolk County, who has the most affordable housing based on the population?
We can, that, that avail, that is available, uh, the County Planning Commission has that information, I'm sure, we just need to put it together, so, that is, that is something that should be discussed as part of the generic environmental impact statement because that will have an impact on each town separately in, in that regard. So, that is a very legitimate question and one, uh, I know we can, we can put together.
And then also the water consumption and the sewer discharge because, you know, water quality is an issue that we talk about and when you're converting from retail to housing units, you know, what will that do to our levels of, in our sewage discharge after the, the sewage has been treated as far as the discharge? So, we just spent twenty-four million, like I said, on our sewer infrastructure and some of that money we had gotten from the county, but we were unable to access the sewer stabilization fund that wouldn't give the taxpayers within the sewer district more than a three percent tax increase. And, you know, we had been in litigation and trying to access that money for our sewer district and were unable to do so and now our residents in the sewer district are looking at a, I think it's a four-hundred percent tax hike in their sewer taxes for those that are connected to sewers.
Right.
So, you know, all that needs to be looked at because it's a, it's a great idea and I love the cons, concept of pavement to green. You weren't on the call earlier, it's a concept that I had brought up last year when I was on a panel for the News Review, that it would be a good idea in those box stores that were going out to create a housing zone for the hospital, for the workers at the hospital for, you know, a walking, a walk-to-work type of thing. But the, our water district is under a lot of stress, we have taken on a capital plan to build new wells and to, or dig new wells and to improve the infrastructure in the water district. And I would just be curious also as to what the increase in water consumption would be based on the number of units that could be permitted in these big box doors.
Right. Right, and we have, and we have all that information, the Health Department has all that, I, there are, listen, there are going to be issues that are going to be very positive in regards to the transformation and some that have to be looked at and if there are mitigation measures that have to be provided, you know, the, the builder will do so. So, you know, whether it's sewage, whether it's water, whether it's traffic, uh, whether it's air quality, whether it's, uh, you know, infrastructure, all of these issues I think are a part and parcel of the generic environmental impact statement the county will do, um, on a larger scale. And then, when you get down to the individual impact on an individual project, uh, then you have that information to be able to use. So, no question, all of that is a very pertinent information that is necessary and we'll, we'll take care of all of that.
So Mitch, first of all, good job multitasking, driving and being in our meeting out here.
He got pulled over.
So, it would be great to get the information about how many school-aged children, just because that happens to be a, a very hot topic in our community right now. Our, our schools are crowded and our school district recently put up a bond to expand our facilities that got voted down in our community, so, um, that's obviously, I think you can understand a real concern of our community right now and I know that's something they would be worried about, it's a hot topic.
Can I take this opportunity to, uh...
And that depends on, that depends on a number of factors, it depends on the location, it depends on the size of the apartment, uh, it depends on other issues involved, so, there, no question about it, um, and as I said, Stony Brook University just did a study on the issue of schoolchildren, um, and I will make sure I get that to the supervisor right away so she, you guys, you all, you can review it and, um, it took real projects and got real numbers from the school district. There's no assumptions here, it can tell you exactly how many schoolchildren came from each individual development or at least how many new schoolchildren. Because I will tell you one thing that does happen is that people who already live in the district move into these units and, and they already have schoolchildren, uh, in the school. So, it's a combination of how many new schoolchildren are created, but I will get that for you.
Thanks Mitch, from the mezzanine level.
Yes, I, I just want to invite, uh, Richard Wines is on the call now, he's our Riverhead TDR Chairman and I'd like to invite him to say a few comments if you want.
Richard, welcome, sorry for the last minute.
Thank you, I, I've been listening on Channel twenty-two and it just, Chip finally just got me in. Um, anyway, it's a very interesting discussion, as co-chair of the TDR committee, I just want to say how much we all appreciate what you're doing right now and focusing on Route fifty-eight, focusing on housing issues, but also focusing on ways to, uh, use this initiative to help preserve, um, farmland for farmers, uh, preserve farmland, preserve the character of the town and, and also to keep promises that were made to farmers when the current master plan was, was put in place. I think all of these things are very important, um, our committee has been working for years and years and years to make this happen, so I'm pleased to see it on an accelerated schedule now. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Mitch.
And the SECRE, which is the GEIS that the county is going to undertake. So Mitch, I had also asked a question, when did you think that that would be starting? Because we are getting ready to do a master plan update and it would be helpful to have your GEIS first before our analysts start looking at it. Yes, Jefferson?
I know that, I know that the county had a meeting yesterday of their council on environmental quality because, uh, the County Planning Commissioner and I talked this morning about it, so I have a feeling that they will approve it, um, I'm hopeful at their next meeting, um, and they'll obviously want to talk to you and the other towns as to what issues you would like them to review, um, in that regard, but I, I don't see any reason, uh, it could not be done, you know, quickly, uh, they may have to, you know, depending on how fast it goes, but, um, I'm hopeful it could be done within the next six months.
Great. And I, and I think Jody, that maybe, uh, and Mitch and Legislator will collect the list, I'll collect the list of questions and we'll send them your way. How's that? Um, Jody?
Yeah, because that would be very helpful.
Yes.
Because I would want to make sure the county studies what you want them to study.
Correct.
While they can't study an individual site, they can study the concepts such as sewage flow, water flow, schoolchildren, traffic, you know, on a generic basis, that's what you want them to study, so, we just make, to make sure they have that information from you.
Okay Mitch, I'll get, I'll get it to you and Legislator, I know that you're going to schedule a meeting very soon with us again and I look forward to it.
Yes.
And as we move forward and again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And I'm just gonna put up...
Thank you.
Oh, you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. I'm just gonna put up your PowerPoint, so, it's on the internet, I think we put it up this morning, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it, we did, okay, so, um, we're just gonna put it up so people can just gather some information. Can you, uh, Chip, go through it?
Unfortunately, now's the time I have to drop off.
I know.
I was sandwiching, luckily, the, the one hour that you offered and we're having this meeting was the one hour I had in between calls, so, but I do have to jump off now. But thank you for including that and making it available to those watching from home who can, uh, you know, even submit questions and comments to us and, um, you know, we really, we really want to see these, uh, projects work and, and, and work to direct, um, to direct development, uh, to where we want it, where we need it and where we've already invested in infrastructure and where we've already, um, you know, done, done work on the land and, and away from the green spaces. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sorry that I have to jump off now.
Have a good, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is actually the legislator's...
Thank you Mitch.
Thanks Mitch.
PowerPoint, um, I'm trying to get a copy, I thought I had, had it with me. Um, can we go to the next slide? It's, thank you, okay, so, uh, so we've got Chip. Okay, so, uh, so we've got Chip. Okay, so we're going on to page two. Just one minute, we're just uploading the PowerPoint. Okay. Okay, there it goes, perfect. So retail, as we know, is on the decline, especially with stores like Amazon and, uh, these big box stores. And, uh, so this Suffolk again was a, a state initiative that, um, they're hoping that Riverhead becomes the model. However, there's a lot of discussions and a lot of questions that have to be answered and the state is partnering with us to work through this. Um, it includes a type of stores, uh, department stores, in malls, big box stores, supermarkets and neighborhood retails and gyms, et cetera. This is an opportunity to build that better. Uh, you, most of these locations have the infrastructure, the parking is there, the utilities are there and there is a, a convenience, um, it's convenient because it's, uh, a long heavily traveled road. And, uh, the impact on traffic as opposed to a big box store, I understand the study, a study has indicated that would not be, would not increase. Next slide, um, we can use this, uh, space to solve multiple location, uh, problems like housing, customers for small community businesses. And again, um, it is anticipated that these, this initiative will help with the mom and pop stores. There's been a, a bottle code, uh, code, um, study, uh, we know we have to do a wastewater flow study. Also, I just want to add that the Department of Health has looked at this and is working for its approval. Percentage of households, we're not gonna get into statistics on it, um, do we have the, the household, the percentage in Suffolk County? We have a survey here on possibly the need. And again, this is legislator's PowerPoint, so I don't wanna add to anything that, um, you know, this is her work. Um, it, it is available on the net, um, I guess just go through the slides real quick for the stats. I'm not sure how visible this is at, at, at someone's home.
Uh, it's full, full screen.
Oh, it's a full screen? Perfect.
Probably okay because it's the white on the dark. It's when you have the light, dark on the white, they, they can't see it.
It, it's here, it's difficult.
Right.
Okay. I love the conservation of, of reclaiming of, uh, some green space. Okay, so we're just take, taking you through it. It is on the, uh, website, it can be downloaded and printed. Okay, any questions? Anyone? Move on. Mitch, if you're still on the call?
He's not.
You're not supposed to be driving and, uh, talking.
He said he pulled over on the side of the road and wasn't driving.
Oh, he did?
Yep.
That's good.
I'm still here.
Oh, we gotta keep you.
Well, you are.
You needed, we weren't talking about you. Thank you again Mitch, it's such short, short notice, uh, of working on this.
We hung up on you on the phone, where'd you-
Yeah, he reappeared. Okay, so, as soon as we finish these slides, anyone wants a copy, you can pick it up from us, just let us know, we'll email it to you. I think we called the legislator, what, at, with Donna at nine thirty and she agreed to come on, which is great.
You can tell she's very excited about the opportunity of using this app.
Yeah, yeah, we're putting all this together throughout the night and then it's like, oh, maybe she'll come and then. She said we caught her in the middle, but she had a break, huh? Okay, so we're done with that, um, now we're gonna move on to the second item of discussion, which is, um, the monthly crime report for July, Chief Tegmilla.
Are we sitting up front again, like the old days?
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, everyone.
Things are looking up.
Things are getting better, for sure. Things are good.
Our numbers are still down and-
Our numbers are still down, so amid the pandemic, things are good at the police department, so.
Well, in Riverhead.
In Riverhead.
Because they've gone up in many other communities-
Correct.
Which is a good indicator of proper police.
I'm talking about cri- crime and stats are down in the police department.
That's good.
Everything except for summonses. So calls received were down, about, about thirty-three percent. domestics are down, which is good. Uh, motor vehicle accidents down by twenty-five percent about. Summonses were up and I think it's probably an all-time high. We issued one thousand seven hundred and thirty summonses last month, so.
Okay.
That's a good thing and I would assume that most of those are speech permitting, so.
Oh, I know, I'm seeing stuff on social media.
Criminal incidents are down, probably about twenty percent. Noncriminal, thirty-three percent. Revenues collected are down twenty-five percent too. And that's probably just because of the billing cycle, so.
T sleds are up significantly.
I'm sorry?
T sleds.
T sleds, yep.
Nine hundred and thirty-three this month compared to sixty last month, eighty-nine the month before, fifty-five the month before. It's the highest month.
Right. So that's a good thing, that's the motor vehicle stop, so they're out there, you know. Especially we had some heightened speed enforcement over the last few weeks, so. More tickets being issued. So we're good.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any else you wanna talk about?
No.
We're good?
We're good, thank you and be safe and thank you for-
Sounds like the news is good right now.
News is good.
Thank you for continuing-
Awesome.
Great thing, keep your mask on.
Oh, here we go.
Wash your hands and stay socially distant. It seems to be working, so.
You're not socially distant.
Stay the course.
Okay.
And so then the gyms are supposed to be opening up on Monday, right?
The gyms, we just got guidance on, on twenty-fourth, I think was the date, right?
Yeah, it's on New York Road.
Yep.
And then what about the occupancy at the catering halls of more than fifty people?
Yeah, no, it's still working on that.
It's still, it's still turning.
I haven't seen anything on that as of yet.
So are we gonna see our catering halls turn into micro apartments also?
Hopefully not, stop.
Hopefully not, for sure.
And unfortunately, we, we got the guidance when it's put up on the website. There is talk about it and everybody, you know, we sent questions up the food chain and they're like, oh, maybe there'll be something on Monday and, uh-
It's just such an arbitrary number and there were lawsuits against the governor for that number, fifty. And the, they prevailed in the lawsuits and now the state is appealing it, I'm told.
And I think the supervisors put a letter in on it.
Yes, we all did, all the Suffolk County supervisors. We also, what some of the catering halls are doing is, and I know it happened here a couple of weekends ago in Riverhead, uh, they had a wedding and it was fifty people and after everyone left and the place was sanitized, they brought fifty more people. So it was really like two receptions. And it was costly and taxing, uh, on the employees and it was a big effort, you know.
On the bride and groom, they had to be there ten hours.
The same family?
Same family.
Ten hours. Oh my God, I jumped, sorry, I did not do that.
At Georgios, Georgios, I think, yeah.
And it's such an arbitrary number. I mean, if you have occupancy for a catering hall for seven hundred people and you can only have fifty or if you have it for a hundred people and you can have fifty, or three hundred people, you can have fifty. It's just an arbitrary number, it should be based on percentage to make sure that you can maintain social separation distances, so I know you'll keep pushing away for them.
Right, and especially in some of our catering halls can accommodate more than fifty people and keep them socially distant, so.
Exactly. Not a time you wanna be in a college town, or some of those college parties I've seen. Ay yi yi. East Hampton had a couple thousand people there, I saw it a long ago. Yep, I saw that too.
Okay.
Stay the course.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, everyone. This wraps up our discussion items for today. In a moment, I'll ask for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the following. Uh, matters surrounding hiring of an employee, that's Tegmilla. Matters surrounding the status of employees, Holt. Matters surround, surrounding the hiring of employees, Mancini. Matters surrounding the hiring of employees, Tucci. Matters surrounding a leave of absence request, that's Coy and Ferris. And matters surrounding the hiring of employees, Dillamore. Thank you and be safe. Can I have a person a second to enter?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All in favor, all opposed, so moved, everyone be safe.
Be careful.